To the House Committee.
Council now becomes committee of the whole council to consider, to continue the consideration of the appropriation bill 2018. The committee will continue the second session to debate the sixty-seven amendments to forty-six heads. Mr. Ah Nok Hing.
Mister Chairman, there are a number of amendments not approved by you. Many of them had to do with planning and infrastructure projects. They are highly controversial and of great concern to the public. Last Thursday, the task force on supply, land supply appointed by Carrie Lam started a consultation on the eighteen options till land supply became hot topic again. Now, many have said that Hong Kong doesn't have enough land, we have a huge population, that's why we need to reclaim land, we have to rezone green belts, and we even have to consider developments on the country parks so we could address housing and other people's livelihood issues. And the same time, we can then also provide more commercial sites. Now Carrie Lam kept saying that we have to promote, stimulate the economy by infrastructure projects. Every year, the government spends a fortune on infrastructure projects, so we kept developing land, reclaiming the sea, and developing infrastructure. Do we really bring about a better life for the people? Now, there's the mention of twenty thirty plus, the mid-island, artificial islands, the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, Kennedy Town, the sewage, the contamina, decontamination project, so on. Now, these amendments of mine have not been approved, but I have to speak on that because these are controversial projects with a lot of problems, so the public, government can't turn a blind eye to these problems. First, amendment number thirty-three, moved by Mister Chu Hui- Eddie Chu, the reduction of, the equivalent of the consultancy fees for twenty eighteen nineteen for the twenty thirty-plus sustainability assessment. Now, twenty thirty-plus has started with a problem in assessing the housing capacity. Now, the assumption is that by twenty forty-three, we'll have a population of eight point two five million, and on top of that, there's a ten percent buffer, so that means we need to develop land that could accommodate nine million people in Hong Kong. But let's look at the figures. The Planning Department has done assessments in the past. In twenty ten, the government estimated that the permanent population in Hong Kong is eight point six three million, so that means we need an additional four thousand and five hundred hectares of land. For the twenty nineteen, twenty thirty-nine apartment population, the Planning Department has revised that downwards to eight point two million. And then, in September twenty twelve, again, the Census and Statistics Department further revised downwards the population projection to eight point two million by twenty thirty-nine. So these figures keep changing. But then what does the twenty thirty-plus tell us? That is, in Hong Kong, we need four thousand five hundred hectares of land. So that's again different from the assessment, the estimates I just mentioned. Now, before, and in fact, we are requiring more land than before the projected population was revised downwards. So how come the population projection keeps going down, but then we keep requiring more and more land? Why? Well, the government came up with a grand reason, that is, we need to enhance or upgrade the living area per head, so we could improve our standard of living, or, well, it's, but it's stating the obvious. Many people are living in cramped conditions, they're living in subdivided flats, and so on, so we do need to improve our living conditions. But it doesn't, is not done by just forming more land. The government says we need more land, so we can then build more public housing. But really, the crux of matter is not whether, how much land reserve we have in Hong Kong, it's about the distribution of land resources. For the East Land Town Metropolis in twenty thirty-plus, or the anti-northeast developments, housing land only accounts for a small proportion of the land required. Most, more land is rather required for commercial uses and so on. Now, for housing land, that includes both land for public housing and HOS and other subsized housing, again, the land amount required is less than that for private housing. So don't say that we need land for public housing. Mister Ah Nok Hing, can I ask you to stop for a minute? You're now talking about amendment thirty-three, which is to cut the budget of the Planning Department. So you shouldn't be talking about the broader housing policy. Please come back to the amendment. Well, Mister Chairman, we're talking about twenty thirty-plus here, and that's very much related to the consultancy study. So why do we want to cut the budget here? It's because for the various population projections, they are at odds with the projections of the Planning Department. Now, because of continuous speculation in the housing market, property prices remain at high level. If we really want to develop land for housing purposes, so more people in Hong Kong could have public housing, now if that's the case, then the consultancy study won't be telling us that for infrastructure and commercial land use, this is more important. Now, we don't change our policy of, don't introduce reform to the housing market, which is based on speculation, then of course, we will need more land, and that's also the mindset adopted in compiling this study. And if that's the case, then we're not going to see any real improvement in our housing, our living conditions. Now, what I'm saying is that there's now to be a consultancy study on twenty thirty-plus, and we want to consider whether the consultancy study will be done right. The government is projecting that the economy is going to slow down, but on the other hand, the government is saying that there is a substantial increase in offers and other commercial land demands. So that's why we need to reclaim the central area, we also need to reclaim, do reclamation on East Diantou, so we could develop our third business, Central Business District CBD. So are we overestimating the demands for commercial land? We have many areas now being developed for office purposes, so the government should make the good use of land available, it should be targeted in this approach. It shouldn't just say that without vision, when our population is going to decline, the government is still blindly forming more land. Now, reclamation could bring about damages to our environment, so that's why when we want to develop land, we have to think carefully, we have to see very carefully where it's the case, and Hong Kong, we have plenty of site that's not been zoned or planned properly, otherwise, if we just push ahead with more land formation, it would just benefit those with vested interest. Now, I'd like to talk about another amendment, moved by Mister Ray Chen. Amendment number nineteen, reduction of the budget by, among, roughly equivalent to the estimates required for the maintenance of the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge by the Highways Department. Now, I'm moving this, I want to talk about this amendment, because I want to talk about the problems we see at the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge. Now, Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge has the longest bridge span in the world, but it's also got the most scandals. There have been ten deaths and over six hundred injuries during construction, there are falsified concrete testing reports, and also there are the embankments put in by the government in a random pattern. So even if that, we're told that that's a still safe, but then the government has also admitted that when there's, there are big waves or typhoon, then there could be stacking of those tech reports, so that's why the government needs to maintain the structures constantly, and that will lead to additional costs. Now, the government hasn't come to realize the seriousness of the problem, it still insists on using this structures, but it hasn't explained why. And now, we are asked to approve the budget for the maintenance works of the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, but we are owed an answer from the government, and then the government tries to put the blame on the media. The government says that the public have only relied on one or two photos to comment on that, and that's the rest comments. But then without these photos, without pressure brought to be borne by the media, would the government actually face up to the problem, would the government actually respond to such problems? I don't think so. So that's how preposterous it is. The government tries hard to hide problems, but then when problems are exposed by the media or the public, then the government will still come up to try to defend it, and it's something we cannot accept. Now, let's not forget that the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge includes the artificial island, it also includes a connection and various related works, that's also the main bridge span, and so on. For information on all these structures, the government knows, the public know nothing. The government is not providing sufficient information. It's just that, just over a month ago, some members asked the Transport and Housing Bureau some questions, and only last month, the bureau admitted that apart from the ten deaths and the injuries of the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, apart from the connection on those parts of the bridge, for the main bridge span project, that's led to another ten deaths of construction workers too. And the government stopped providing any information on the main bridge. The public only knows that the government has injected nine billion dollars into the construction of the main bridge span, and then we are shouldering about half of the two, twenty billion, two billion dollars of loans, and that's cost overrun, but such information doesn't go to the Finance Committee. So we're not giving it much information, but Hong Kong, we are made to pay for the bridge. And the government relies on the majority support by established, by the Pro-Establishment Camp, so the government doesn't need to give an explanation, it just regards the Finance Committee as the ATM, it could just take money as it likes. So we must not allow that. About a few weeks ago, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mister Chen Kim Po, said, now when officials come to answer questions, they're not really giving proper answers. So that's our bottom line, we can't retreat further. And then last week, some loyalists said that, well, in Hong Kong, we need to have reclamation in any case, so why don't we set up a reclamation fund? So I want to ask that member. Now, we have plenty of land in Hong Kong that's not been put to good use or planned properly, so why must we first consider reclamation? Because it's irreversible. We believe that with reclamation and developments on country park, or even filling up the Pulver Cove, it will rely on all these crazy ideas to increase land supply, then we believe we can address the land issue well, then I think we are shying away from the real issue.
Amendment twenty-eight, moved by Mister Ray Chen. The reduction of budget is roughly equivalent to eighty-eight non-directive post remuneration for speeding up land supply and streamlining land development. I would like to speak on this amendment as well. There is plenty of existing land in Hong Kong for development, for example, brownfield sites, or agricultural land stockpiled by developers. Now, we could resort to the land resumption legislation to resume the land. We shouldn't take the opportunity of collaborating with the developers and then transfer interest to them. And then, there are options, there are actually more options than the eighteen-one, that is, option nineteen, option twenty, option twenty-one, development of military sites, land that's designated for village housing, development, small housing development, and so on. Now, the government is spending a vast amount of public money on all these projects. These projects are controversial, there's been much objection, they destroy homes or villages, they destroy the environment. So there are many other ways for the government to promote sustainable development, but in the face of all this developments, the government, criticisms, the government still insists on this approach, some say it's preposterous, suggest developing military sites. But, but even if the government resumes the golf course, the golf course could be recited to somewhere where housing development is not suitable. There are such precedents for military sites. It shouldn't be a taboo for discussion. In Hong Kong, we've over ten military sites. So should we not review the use of all these sites? Now, when we have, the government always says that we need to develop land to address our housing problem, but I hope all in Hong Kong would know that. If we just talk about land supply, we don't talk about collusion between the government and the, and the private sector, and we don't talk about concentration of land bank in the hands of few developers, and doesn't matter how much language developed, the problem would just persist. Thank you. Mister Yu Cie Wing.
Mister Chairman, thank you. I speak in opposition to amendment number fifty-three, to slash two items, that is, the reduction of twenty-six point three billion dollars, which is roughly equivalent to the amount to be given to the Ocean Park for developing education tourism projects and for the new show on water. Now, Ocean Park is a well-known theme park in Hong Kong for many years, it's made huge contribution to the tourism industry, it's helped job creation in Hong Kong and our economic development, that's a fact not to be denied. Now, with increasing competition in the neighborhood, we need to enhance the appeal of the Disneyland park, so it won't run at loss. The government has injected another five point four billion dollars into Disneyland. Now, some of the clauses may not be reasonable, but we want to maintain the competitiveness of the Disneyland in the region, so that's the right approach. The other theme park, that is, the Ocean Park, has been established for forty-one years now. It's a place where many of us spent our happy childhood, it's also a good leisure destination for the elderly, and it's free too for them. So the, the Ocean Park has made huge contribution to our economic development. Now, Ocean Park faces competition from Chuhai, so it's facing immense challenges. Ocean Park is an important Hong Kong brand. The Hong Kong, the government may not have any shares in the Ocean Park, but it must support the park. So this is a theme park where there's a collective memory, and then it could develop further. The government, the budget is proposed to give of three hundred and ten million dollars to the Ocean Park for education programs and for staging new shows, and I support that. Now, this amount compared to the amount for the Disneyland is not much, it's just to address the pressing needs of the Ocean Park. Now, the Ocean Park must follow the example of the Disneyland, it must come up with a near-term, medium-term, and long-term planning strategies with vision, so it could come up with some unique tourism attractions and enhances competitiveness. I hope the government will give financial and policy support when the Ocean Park comes up with such a plan. Amendment number fifty-three involves slashing the budget for a brand-new water performance with local features. Now, the government has, the bureau has been focusing on promoting tourism attractions with local features, there have been new items as well, and we see that the government, that we've seen some achievements. The government must keep encouraging the tourism board come up with innovative and creative tourism products, and bring, and bring in tourists from across the spectrum, and we should support that. We need to provide unique experience for Hong Kong, and the investment doesn't cost much, so why won't we do it?
Other than strengthening the existing tourism features, the Commerce and Development Bureau should also have the responsibility of, for developing relevant facilities, so that they can be implemented as soon as possible, but then that needs coordination, and we do have some examples, for example, like the food vans. Well, at the time, the Financial Secretary proposed the project, and then the bureau facilitated that, and at the time, they set up dedicated office to help the stakeholders to resolve the difficulties, and as a result of that, we managed to introduce the food vans as soon as possible. On the contrary, this year, the Tourism Commission also introduced a project involving some tourist attractions, including heritage monuments, and also special cuisines and so on, and as a result of that, that was very popular amongst the tourists and visitors. But then, I think there is still some room for improvement in terms of the government's support, in terms of the QR code and so on, that has to be resolved by the Tourism Commission on its own finances, and subsequently, the Tourism Commission, together with the Central Western District Council, and also the relevant party, they also introduced the Dr. San Yat Sen Heritage Trail. Well, they worked together to resolve the problems, we can see that there were sculptures, and also there were QR codes for the visitors, so that they could also come to the old Central District, and that's only part of the facilities. I hope that for the Old Town Central, that can provide a better experience to the visitors. So these examples only go to show that in terms of developing tourist attractions, there is no policy or central policy, we only rely on the official's wills. So I hope that we can learn from that experience, that is, from the Old Town Central, and also the food van experience, so that there can be better coordination by the relevant bureau, and then the relevant resources can also be developed. Thank you. These are my remarks. Next, Mister Holdan Chow.
President, I speak on item twenty-nine and thirty. Well, that's, these are amendments proposed by Mister Raymond Chen to cut the spending for certain heads of the DOJ. Twenty-nine is about slashing the yearly staff remuneration, and also, item thirty is about the DOJ's prosecution spending, that is, five hundred and thirty million dollars for the entire year, that would be slashed. So I'm speaking to oppose these two proposed cuts. President, I noticed that other than these two items, item twenty-nine and thirty, they are both on cutting the spending by the DOJ. Item twenty-three is about the police force staff remuneration will be cut by about a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars, so that's the estimated expenditure. Well, in fact, President, the Opposition Camp in proposing to cut the spending or expenditure by the DOJ and also the HKPF, that would lead us to sink. Upon the why they are targeting these two departments, we can see that these two departments are responsible for maintaining law and order in Hong Kong, they are responsible for prosecution and so on. Now, by cutting the spending by the police force and also the DOJ in maintaining law and order, and also the staff remuneration for public prosecution by the DOJ, doesn't mean that the Opposition Camp would like to see a very chaotic situation whereby there would be people breaking law and order, and then we would not be able to practice rule of law, so that for legal problems, they'll be resolved politically, and even for people breaking the law, they would not have to be brought to the book. And if that's indeed the thoughts of the Opposition Camp, and if we indeed embark on that track, then I'm afraid we'll have a collapse of protocol and everything, and then there'll be no law to go by, and then even if there are laws, there'll be no law enforcement at all. And if indeed that's the case, then our Hong Kong public will really find it difficult to be grateful to you. So I'm against the proposal to cut the spending by the DOJ and the police force. I'm of the view that, President, the Opposition Camp should reflect on themselves, well, if indeed you have committed acts that have broken the law and order situation in Hong Kong, and you just sit back and do nothing about it, and if, if you just condone to such acts, and you're trying to cut the spending by these law enforcement agencies and the DOJ's prosecution spending, there will be far-reaching implications on our society as a whole. That's why I'd like to speak to oppose their proposal. And also, I'd like to respond to item thirty-three, well, that's a proposal by Eddie Chu on the twenty thirty-plus estimated expenditure, and just now, I also heard Mister Ah Nok Hing speaking on this amendment, and I'd also like to respond to his remarks, in a sense that, well, Hong Kong twenty thirty-plus is a roadmap for future development in Hong Kong, including land zoning, and also future land uses and so on, that's a necessary planning for our future, and of course, that would also include the artificial island in the East Metropolis on Lantau. Yes, I've heard the Opposition Camp say that, all right, we are short of housing sites, and we also have a shortage of residential units and so on, how can we resolve the problem? And the administration apparently has not been able to do anything at all, but then if the administration is to do long-term planning in order to meet these long-term needs of our society, then they are trying to cut the spending by these departments, and all they are trying to do is that you will no longer be allowed to do these long-term planning. If that's the attitude adopted, then that's very irresponsible to our society, all right? On the one hand, you say that there are problems that have to be resolved, and when people try to resolve these problems by doing long-term planning, you're cutting their spending so that they would not be able to do it. So that's really not acceptable. So I hope that, President, they understand that, well, Hong Kong needs long-term planning, and also for our future generations, we also need to have proper planning, and we need to be accountable to them, and if today's problems cannot be resolved, well, we will also have to do our job by trying to resolve them, we cannot just pretend that we do not see our future problems. So these are my remarks, President. Mister Raymond Chen, thank you, President. I'm also grateful to the Pro-Establishment Camp for the remarks, whether they are speaking in support or against our proposals, I do encourage you to speak up. Because if you look at the budget, well, for the CSAs that we move, we have learned from our past experience, as far as I'm concerned, in moving these amendments, I've adopted a more stringent approach, I would be more targeted in moving these amendments, and because of the time constraint, I might not be able to speak on each and every amendment and explain the rationale behind these amendments to the public, and as a result of that, some people, or even the media, might just take the liberty to interpret these amendments, because on one occasion, with regard to the spending of the discipline forces, I attempted to cut the spending for the entire year on one occasion, and then the Pro-Establishment Camps questioned, what or not, I was suggesting that we do not need the discipline forces at all. In fact, this amendment is very targeted, I'm not saying that we don't like the police, and therefore, we will cut the spending for the entire police force. In fact, for item thirty, and also Mister James Tung proposing item thirty-seven, the amendments are very similar, that is, about the staff remuneration and also special services by the police force, they'll be cut. And if you looked at the special FC meetings, well, we also asked the administration about the special remuneration, what is, what was it for? And the administration in the past, and also now, I think they're always the same, because you would never be able to get to the bottom of a matter, all right? When you ask them, what is it for? Well, the Security Bureau would never be cooperative, they would never be prepared to tell us the truth. That's why, in moving these amendments, I think we are very
Truth. That's why in moving these amendments, I think we are very targeted in moving these amendments. And the purpose of this is to force the Security Bureau in the future would have to come clean. On explaining how the so called special uh uh services and also the remuneration. So what what is it for? We cannot, we should not be forced to just vote blindly for that without asking questions. Well, Mr. President, on this occasion, I'd like to speak on the amendment moved by Mr. Alokim, item fifty four. That is to slash item head zero zero zero, so that subhead one five six Education Bureau. That is to um cut about two hundred and fifty million dollars for the Education Bureau. First of all, I'd like to say that this year. Uh on Education Bureau, I've also moved an amendment that is to cut the Education Bureau by about seventy two million dollars. And the purpose is to cut an equivalent to this year's B S A spending for. P three, that's for the B C A exam. In fact, other than myself, Mr. Hei Chi Fong. And also Mr. Yip Kin Yun have moved similar amendments and this year, I've also abided by the rule of. One item, one amendment, so one amendment to one subhead. So even if you move more than one amendments to one subhead, it doesn't mean that you'll be able to move them. Uh and in fact, the one that you'd like to move most earnestly might be eliminated. For example, I'd like to cut the pay for Yang Yan Hong. I would not have been able to do so and therefore I have not done so. That's why I've cut the spending for the B C A exam by seventy two million dollars and two other members have also moved similar amendments. And they've been um alleged by the government that is not in line with the actual spending. That's why. They were prohibited from moving those amendments and yet I have not been accused of the same thing. But then this year, Mr. President, you go by the one amendment to one subhead. It's not that. One member would only be allowed to move one amendment to one subhead, so all members would only be able to move one amendment to one subhead. And in fact, the president has been rather relaxed in dealing with this amendment with regard to the head for the Education Bureau. Uh Hei Chi Fong, Alokin have been allowed to move their amendments and I'd like to confirm this with you, Mr. President. In fact, my amendment has been consolidated into the overall amendment because I was talking about seventy two. Million dollars and then for Alokim's amendment is over twenty nine, uh two hundred and ninety million dollars. But then as I'm targeting the B C A examination cost, but then in speaking, Mr. President. I'm also targeting or focusing on this because that's under the Education Bureau as and that's been consolidated. And as a result of that, I can continue to move this amendment to cut the B C A examination cost for B C A. As Mr. Yip Kin Yun said, well, he was, he wasn't even allowed to move the first amendment. I was saying that, well. If you go by that rule, that is one amendment to one subhead, then you should have been allowed to do that unless your information or figure. Has been inaccurate, but then you will still be allowed to speak. So I'd like to confirm this first. But then what I'd like to say is with regard, well, before I speak on the cut to the spending on the B C A exam. Well, when compared to Mr. Yip Kin Yun's amendment, he was trying to cut the Curriculum Development Office of the Education Bureau. Because if you look at the B C A document, it says that, well, for Chinese, English and also Mesa. For the B C A, there will be a dedicated task group on this and each group will be uh. Will have members from the education's or the examination authority and so on, so that it would come up with a roadmap. So that they would be able to look at the basic competencies of students on these areas. That's why for the officials in charge of these. Well, they are practically from the Curriculum Development Office, so that's the Development Officer. And if you're able to cover the spending for the Curriculum Development Office, that would also show that with regard to the. A resumption of the B C A exam, we are staunchly against it. Well, the administration has said that for this year's B C A. Is not mandatory, so it's not that all students will be required to take it. And that would only be done on a random basis. So students will be selected or randomly picked to take the examination. According to the exam, according to the to the administration, only ten percent of the students will be selected to take the examination. But then as the administration has this policy, that is, if you were to get the report for the entire class, then the entire. Grade will have to take the examination.
So this measure in effect will make the schools that in order to obtain the student report with. That will force the entire grades of students to sit for the B C A. So it's actually violate the promise of enhancement of the B C A. And finally, we just back to square one that most of the school would, all the students required to sit for the B C A, so I won't elaborate on that. And for the the government schools actually take the lead to have a school-wide participation, which deviates from your intent. So our feedback was that ninety something percent of the government schools will have the entire grade of students sitting for B C A. And we say that the government school, I would take the lead, will the boss, as we just government, apply pressure to government schools. So that they were forced to support the resumption of B C A. There's a huge question mark hanging. So under these circumstances, there's no way for us to know. That whether this so called sampling can resolve the drilling problem of B C A because this is. I was still having the entire grade sitting for B C A. Third reason, and the arrangements have ignored abuse of students and parents. Said, where the school to decide to whether to have the entire grades to sit for B C A. So for you seeing a school-based decision, are students, parents, teachers included, would it, uh teachers want to stand up to say no? Then, well, instead, just instead of just sticking to the E D B policy. The government cannot, not able to respond to this. And fourthly, not able to prevent excessive drilling. And the resumption of the B C A. Have made a lot of schools to have a good entire grades sitting for it in return for the reports. Even though you cannot compare these school reports, well, um. But of course, but most likely that you will compare that with the other schools instead of using for self-reference. So the above reasons have made me to submit this amendment to reduce this. Seventy five million expenditure for E D B. So going back to the E D, uh Alahin's amendment. And to slashing the whole year operating expenditure for the Curriculum Development Institute for the E D B. So is it the public stirring up trouble or is it the governments to blame? I think the Curriculum Development Institute cannot evade the blame. Recently, the C D I has been found. That in the course of reviewing the textbooks have um. Taking, mixing up black and white. I wonder if you're carrying flavor with the Hong Kong government or the Beijing government. That. Has some, made some very intriguing moves. The media have exposed that when evaluating the historical. History textbooks by some publishers, it claimed that Hong Kong is situated in the southern part of China, it's appropriate language. And in Hong Kong, uh hand over sovereignty to China is considered inappropriate language wording. And the founding of P R C have led to the self migration. It's not, it's not appropriate, rather at the lack of a cause relationship. Such examples. Whether from the official documents from the Hong Kong government or the central government's documents, we saw the frequent. Appearance of the word um uh return of. Reuniting with with the mainland. So I think today, um that um. The return of sovereignty is wrong, is instead of the resumption of sovereignty. And we claim is, you claim this is right, so why have been wrong for the past two decades or so? If we've been correct all along, then all of a sudden. That you take it out and like fair that I think there's been um, it's a waste of resources and creating a nuisance. And some even think. Uh you are gradually brainwashing to changing the minds of the students to distort the history. For the sake of political correctness. Do in turn to carry favor with the government or the central government, that's we can't tell. But this is a reasonable suspicion. Going on the working group on the evaluating textbook, the convener is the uh. Chen Peikua, the. The chief curriculum development officer. And and humanities and um. She was, and scope includes Chinese history, geography, history, tourism, hospitality, general studies. Religious studies and uh junior forms and social projects is. Are within the ambit of this official. So reducing the expenditure of the Curriculum Development Institute. Will uh. Make this, well, it's a show the strong objections to this particular. Department and the textbook, if curriculum development department is still a black box operation. We've, we found it's not correct to say that Hong Kong is in the southern part of China. Why is this incorrect? We can only speculate. Do we have issued guidelines to school? Is there a debate with the education sector? And with the history experts to discuss on this instead? That would call that. Let you show criticism. I will not even go into details. I just want to tell the administration that the education, especially the. The history education, the intention and the aims is to train the student to seek for the truth. And to learn about the future from the past, not to repeat the past mistakes. And the E D B had made the student living in the world of lies and not able to learn the lessons from the history, which. Uh contributing the intent of the history class. Therefore, I'm not able to support the funding. To this ill-intended. That through the curriculum divine and changing the curriculum to reshape his revised history. And to brainwash our students. And giving the salary to this bureaucrat. I support Mr. Alahin to slashing the annual budget for the Curriculum Development Institute. Uh Mr. Felix Chong, I'd like to, I had one ninety six and one forty four. Ninety six, uh we see had to do with the um it. Oh, E T O, as well, as well as the mainland offices set up by the Hong Kong government. The economics, trade offices. So on ninety six is the overseas E T Os. Hong Kong has been an open economy for the past half a century, relying on export and trade. This overseas E T Os. Probably. Of a very important role for the import exporter in served of getting and trade negotiations. And trade agreements relied on this overseas E T Os to offer assistance. As we all know, that the U S, under the Trump administration, had initiated other protectionist measures. And how would that affect our export market, affect due business, ever more relied on the help of these E T Os? The, for this E T O, they have two basic functions, one of which will promote Hong Kong companies. Entering the overseas market, the other role is attracting overseas company coming to Hong Kong. Without these E T Os. I wonder how will that promote Hong Kong's economic development? Especially the world economies is unpredictable. And now that um and the U S had different measures targeting different countries and China. Uh there's a likelihood of a trade war and in case of a trade war, how can Hong Kong possess itself? So the secretary is here for the steel. Um terror is already impacting Hong Kong. So is there any future um. Measures that will affect Hong Kong exports that will rely on the E T Os to obtain the latest information. And as well to negotiate with the Department of Commerce in the U S. Second scenario, would they like the U Brexit, for example? So what is the impact of Brexit to Hong Kong? So what will happen to the EU and Hong Kong? They rely on the Britain and the Europe E T Os. To handle that. I know that recently the Japanese government have been discussing with the Hong Kong government. That the Trans-Pacific Partnership, T P P, whether the Hong Kong interested in joining, of course. I would hope that the secretary would take up this opportunity. There was definitely be a booster or. Trade. They would not rely on the Hong Kong government to sit in the office. They will rely on their overseas. On bureaucrats. Another one, and in, we just mentioned about foreign trades, so on the separate, on how to attract. Foreign companies into Hong Kong. We also rely on these E T Os and talent overseas investors. That Hong Kong have a new policy in place, for example, the two-tier profit tax regime and. The. Um tax concessions on I N T investment. And there's nowhere else in the world to offer three hundred percent of tax allowances on I N T investment. That's very attractive to the overseas companies. To entice them investing in Hong Kong. So just now I mentioned that Hong Kong is an export. Oriented and external economy, so we have a lot of, do a lot of business overseas partners. Without these trade relations, at the end. It will affect Hong Kong's revenue. There's a less corporate revenue, we're paying less taxes. What would they affect, do we affect the expenditure of the government? So. The tax receipts will all spend on education, social welfare and healthcare. So please don't think that these uh E T Os uh. Are small in size and then their budget can be slashed it, but at the end it will affect their exports. Would affect the attracting foreign capital in U S and in the end will harm Hong Kong's economy. And will actually impact our social services. So please don't. Um lock down on this role of these E T Os, when not only would we not, should not slash the budget, we should actually. Uh put more resources into these E T Os so they can enhance the promotion of Hong Kong and challenge. And we laying the latest situation in Hong Kong. So if the secretary helped to create more positions, if countries would definitely support. And now on subhead one four four on the mainland offices, head one four four on mainland offices. The situation is similar. Before Beijing or Shanghai or Chengdu. Or Wuhan. There another role is to taking care of the Hong Kong residents there. We have a lot of Hong Kong residents living in mainland China and. I'm investing, I'm opening companies or even retiring in the mainland. Or residing there. So they would rely on the Hong Kong government to care of them, especially for businessmen. I've, I've received a lot of requests for assistance to a lot of companies again were embroiled in some. I've I've received a lot of uh requests for assistance. There are a lot of companies again were embroiled in some commercial dispute and they have don't have no idea which department to turn to. So that is how the mainland offices of the Hong Kong government can step in in offering legal advice and professional services. That's what the Hong Kong government can do. There are a lot of Hong Kong students studying in the mainland, working there as well, and a lot of at taxation matters and the mainland offices I can provide such information to them. And we know that um the Bay Area development will be an important policy that we'll implement. So let's not even talk about that um for the investment we made in the Pro with the Delta in the past three decades in the future. There are a lot of new industry emerging in the Bay Area, for example, the healthcare sector, the elderly care. Maybe a lot of the elderly will return to retire their um homeland and to to buy a house, enjoy their twilight years. So there require the mainland offices to offering services to complement the needs of retirement and so on, for education and healthcare and so on. They will require more resources to be devoted, so.
So I believe the S L government should plow in more resources and manpower in the Bay Area. Perhaps one or two more offices could be opened there too, to support the development of the Bay Area. Mister Ray Chen and Mister Eddie Chu don't go to mainland themselves. They don't go overseas. They don't know what's going on in this world. They don't know what's going on on the mainland. But that doesn't mean that the Hong Kong people don't want to go back to the mainland for the development. So I think we need to cast our sights much wider towards the mainland and the world. Don't, you know, Hong Kong is a small city, so don't just focus on this small city without casting sight further. So I speak in opposition to these amendments. Mister Gary Fan, thank you, Mister Chairman. I speak on behalf of the New Democrat. On the two amendments, amendment number thirty-two moved by Mister Eddie Chu and amendment number twenty-nine moved by Mister Ray Chen. First, on Mister Eddie Chu's amendment to reduce the head one-one-eight subhead zero-zero-zero. That is the um full year's estimated expenditure on territorial planning of the planning department, that's program area one. Now, I know, of course, the planning department is also the only department responsible for the use of land in Hong Kong. But I would like to give my views on the priorities for land development um speaking on this amendment. So then I hope the public will come to uh further understand this issue. For the twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen um under head one-one-eight, we see that in program area one, uh the management of brownfield site will be one of the priority tasks. For the use of brownfield sites in the N T uh in April twenty seventeen, the government commissioned a study on these landfill sites or brownfield sites. For N T southwest and N T northwest, um the study has been completed in relation to the brownfield sites. And there is a non um onsite survey findings. There is about one thousand three hundred hectares of brownfield sites identified, but the government would use some, not all, of the brownfield sites which are in remote places or which are fragmented. And then the government would say that these sites are in faraway places, they are fragmented, there is insufficient infrastructure. That's why the government says there is little room for development for the consolidated development of these sites. Then uh there are groups in the community and members in this council who have a clear picture. Um the liberal research community found that uh uh by the end of twenty seventeen, there are ninety-four sites on mainland which are larger than two hectares. They are all linked up together. So together, they are provide one thousand one hundred and seventy-one point five hectares of land. That is a seven, the equivalent of seven Chin Wang Town centers. And of these sites, some seven hundred twenty-three hectares have not been included in any development plans of the government. There's not even a timetable for development. And then there are thirteen sites ranging from twelve to seventy-one hectares. Um they are adjoining brownfield sites. And these are among those sites not with no planning of of no development plans. So the there's need to have such a comprehensive data and information for the government to to make planning for brownfield sites. But then the government kept saying, we need to reclaim land, we need to develop on country parks and brown green field, green sites or green belts to provide more land. Mister Eddie Chu has moved amendment number thirty-two. And my key reasons for supporting this amendment uh were, as I stated above. Now, in Ma Liu Shui Long Kutan and Eastland Town Metropolis, there will be an artificial island. The government uh seems to be favoring reclamation for creating land. And it is also evident, so government is not making use of brownfield sites. It's not picking of other sites such as military sites or club premises or club sites. Instead, the government wants to go for reclamation, the uh country park and green belts for creating land. The government completed a feasibility study for the uh reclamation at Ma Liu Shui. So there the uh science park, the government plans to reclaim sixty hectares of land. And then there is also the shatin sewage treatment works which we moved into caverns. Twenty-eight hectares of land will be uh vacated, so a total of eighty-eight hectares of land will be for housing development. That's uh equivalent to the size of um the Sha- a city one shatin development. For the sixty hectares of land to be reclaimed near Ma Liu Shui, many have commented on the various problems. There won't be enough interest, infrastructure, there will be the wall defect, and that will add to the burden of the community facilities and so on. And in fact, a few weeks ago, twenty thirteen, the planning department already did a similar consultation. But in that round of consultation, um only thirty hectares of land were mentioned um that could be created from reclamation. But this year, the government is proposing to double the reclamation scale to sixty hectares and uh together, there will be the shatin treatment work site vacated twenty-eight hectares, so altogether eighty-eight hectares to be considered together. And then for the East Landtown Metropolis, uh there will be an man-made island. And and this is proposed under twenty thirty plus. And that's enough to meet the shortfall of one thousand two hundred hectares of land. That's what the document said. But um it's only for the period twenty fourteen to twenty forty-three. And there will be an increase of nine hundred eighty thousand population. So that's the assumption that we'll have this um population increase. But if the population increase is not to be as um projected in twenty thirty plus, is there any fallback option for the land reclaimed? Well, there's no such information in the document. That's why the New Democrats believe the government is trying to create the sense of a land shortage. And then the government wants to rationalize um is um plan to reclaim land, to build on the country park and green belts. So the government is trying to exaggerate the land shortage in Hong Kong. At the government, at the same time, the government is ignoring the potential of brownfield sites and military sites and other idle sites. So the New Democrats believe that um we should not give priority to reclamation for land formation. Rather, we it should be based on um comprehensive and long-term population policy. Public views must be respected and consulted in a process. So the government shouldn't just blindly invade a country park or come up crazy plans to fill up the the second biggest reservoir in Hong Kong and so on. Now, I'm supporting this amendment of Mister Eddie Chu for another reason. Because I want to show that the planning department has not explained properly how it um ha- formulates a um criteria for developing green belts. In July twenty seventeen, government has come up proposals to rezon some sites, for example, in uh Changkano, there are five green belt sites being rezoned into housing sites. But the New Democrats believe such a zoning does uh not taking account the original in principles and intentions of green belts zoning. Green belt zoning is to um minute uh on, you know, reduce the impact caused to the e- ecology from urban development. So green belt service, buffer zones between country parks and the urban developments as well. This is a very, very important consideration. But without consulting the public, the government has been rezoning green belt sites for other purposes, and that's a major policy change, but it's never explained that to the public. Uh in particular, doesn't explain the criteria for rezoning green belt site, doesn't explain the um ecological values of green belt sites. Though so the bureau has been uh equivocal in its explanation. So when setting priorities, government should make adjustment on the various um options for creating land. And that will be the best answer to the concerns of the people of Hong Kong. That is, we should give priorities to the development of brownfield sites, idle military sites and club sites. And some political parties say it or or fourth on the list should be small house sites that's been left idle. Now, um many years ago, we have asked the government uh together with other uh planning groups that we should develop defending golf club as um alternative to the N T northeast development plan. Last year, we learned that the lease of the golf club will soon expire in a few years. And now the government is suggesting we um deal with the uh the golf club development um either as a a comprehensive development or in different phases. That's what now the government proposes. So as we develop golf clubs, um we shouldn't we also address imbalance in in transport infrastructure? I hope the government will stop the development of the N T northeast by destroying homes and villages. Instead, we should make good use of the golf's club site to deal with the land shortage that the government kept emphasizing. Uh and that would be a proper response to the need for land for housing development. That's also response to public concerns. And then we could set some reasonable priorities for land development in Hong Kong. Now, I would also like to say on behalf of the New Democrats in support of amendment number twenty-nine moved by Mister Ray Chen, that's um to reduce the budget of head ninety-two subhead zero-zero, roughly equivalent to the full year remuneration of the Secretary for Justice, the um um pro- pro- criminal prosecutors and so on. Why? Because once uh Eva Chang assumed post, um there was a scandal of her illegal building structures. And it was also found that when she submitted her documents to the bank, he didn't make any mention of the basement. And she, it was also suspected that she used a false document uh to obtain a mortgage. That's against um the um principles uh against the the law uh in the use of falsified documents. So we the the New Democrats believe that the Secretary for Justice has no longer any integrity and she is not fit. Uh Eva Chang is not fit to be the Secretary for Justice. She should resign.
With that scandal um surrounding Eva Chang, still she managed to be supported by Chief Executive Carrie Lam. So it shows that there might have been other tasks given to Eva Chang in assuming the post of the Secretary for Justice as to what actually happened behind the scene. Well, after disqualifying uh candidates for the uh March eleventh uh by election, well, that showed that the administration indeed had political task for her because uh they have been emphasizing that, well, uh the disqualification was decision was made by the um returning officer and uh but then time and again, uh it has been shown that the Secretary for Justice did give uh legal advice to the uh election officer. And that shows that originally, we are talking about the election officer, who's grade and rank was not high, and yet she has been given the power to disqualify a candidate running for an election. And yet the S for J has been able to uh evade her political responsibility by disqualifying a candidate for an election that would deprive Hong Kong people's right to standing in election and also the right to vote. And Eva Chang has failed to uphold and defend the basic law, and therefore, she simply is no longer qualified to um take up the post of Secretary for Justice, and therefore, we support the proposal by Mister Raymond Chen to cut the remuneration for the uh Secretary for Justice. So Mister President, I've spoken on the two amendments. Okay? Next. Miss Priscilla Lang, President, I'm speaking against um uh amendments fifty-four, fifty-five and fifty-six. They've been proposed by Mister Allohi, Mister Chang Chung-Tai and Mister Ho Chi Feng. It's about the resource cutter for the Education Bureau. Well, President, one of the hot topics in town lately is about whether Cantonese is our mother tongue. Well, I'm of the view that whether or not Cantonese is our mother tongue is really making waves without wind. Well, have we been speaking in Cantonese and even the Chief Executive, when he comes to this council for the uh question uh and answer session, she has always been speaking in Cantonese. In fact, Hong Kong is a very flexible society. Well, since um early childhood, well, most of us would be speaking in Cantonese in communicating with others and in expressing ourselves. But then when we write, basically, we would be using Chinese or Putonghua uh for uh grammatic purposes. So if we write in Cantonese, then we might very uh likely fail in our examination because we do not use the Cantonese grammar in written Chinese. And if we were to replace Cantonese, then the entire Guangdong province would uh have an outcry. So we we are very passionate about Cantonese and also uh much of the terms come from ancient Chinese, for example, in mortgage terms and uh well, in fact, when you look up the uh uh Tsihai dictionary, well, many of these terms have a long history. So even uh even though that's the case, Cantonese and Chinese should not be pitched against each other as if they are mutually exclusive. In fact, many people, including the officials, on official occasions, we do speak in Cantonese. We have never said that it's not one of our choices. So I don't know how it can be blown up of all. So I don't know how it can be blown up of all proportions. Well, indeed, there have been discussions about whether or not it should be the official language and so on. But then we need not be worried about it at all, and we have already made it clear. Well, for the current policy on bilingualism and and also the use of Putonghua, Cantonese, and English as our spoken languages, I think is indisputable, and there is no need for us to debate about it. But then recently, there has been a trend in politicizing these. And I think that's totally unnecessary, because Cantonese and Putonghua, they are like siblings. They are like brothers. And sometimes, it's easier for us to express certain terms in Cantonese, including Cantonese songs. We like, well, Lam Zicheng. And I think on the mainland, he's also very popular. Many people like Cantonese pop music. And then there are poems that can be read or recited in Cantonese or Putonghua. For example, for Su Shi's Shu Shi's Hui Diao Gao Tuo. All right, well, there are lines that would be better recited in Cantonese, we all know it. So it's easy to recite it in Cantonese. But then, when my two boys study Li Bai's poem on enjoying wine, well, when they try to recite it in Putonghua, well, my Putonghua is not that good. For example, if you try to recite Jiang Jun Jiu, as you can see, we can see that the Yellow River's water is from the sky. And we have parents praying for the children and so on. So in international kindergartens, they study that in Putonghua. What's wrong about it? Why do we have to look at it from the political perspective? Why do we have to debate about it? Why can't we just leave it to schools so that they can just make decisions on the basis of established practices and so on? And therefore, why should we continue to make that a subject of debate? Cantonese and Putonghua are like siblings, and they are very closely connected. All right, after I've spoken on this recently, there is another hot topic which I'm also very concerned about this, that is about liberal studies. Well, liberal studies are as a hot topic for curriculum review. Well, I'm also very pleased about this because since I joined this council in twenty oh eight and starting from twenty oh nine, I've been following the subject. And those who are proposing for a curriculum reform, well, in fact, the PTU also said that some eighty percent of liberal studies teachers don't want it to be changed. And they think that taking an examination on liberal studies is right. I remember back in twenty oh nine at the education panel, it's not just me. In fact, many pan-democratic lawmakers also query the way that the examination was arranged. Was it the most suitable way? In fact, you can also check on the records. In fact, I think there were two classic cases involving liberal studies. One was in Shamsui Pole and a couple who were civil servants. They were parents, and then they said that for their third child, she's a sixteen-year-old daughter. Well, she started to study liberal studies, and she had a quarrel with her parents. And then shortly afterwards, the parents were very upset because if you continue like that, I'll not be sending you out to overseas studies so that it's not like your two brothers. But then the daughter said that, all right, if you both die, then your estate will be mine, and I don't have to be bothered by you. And the parents were very disturbed. And they asked the daughter afterwards, after she had calmed down, all right, why did you say that? And she said that it's my liberal studies teacher who taught me this. So was it covered by, what's covered under the curriculum of liberal studies? Is it about estate inheritance and so on? Another student, well, the student and teacher brought me the audio recording because the liberal studies teacher was spent some fifty percent of the time in class to explain the so-called liberal studies knowledge. But then, as soon as she or he or she started, he used abusive language. So I was so scared that I didn't want to continue to listen to that. But then, what drawn my attention to liberal studies had nothing to do with politics. It's about the way the exam was organized. And also, there's a lot of room for maneuvering by the teachers. And we didn't even have the Occupy Central movement. And then for tutorial classes, the teachers got a lot of extra revenue because, well, they got a lot of subjects under liberal studies for students to take. And then afterwards, there were schools and students, well, the students, well, they were not responsible for liberal studies because of the curriculum reform. They originally had been teaching chemical studies and music. And then subsequently, they had to switch to teach liberal studies. Some science students and also some engineering students said that liberal studies involve a lot of things. And therefore, they spent most of their time on this subject, and they didn't have time for other subjects. Because if they didn't make good results, then they wouldn't be able to get admitted to universities. So should it be a mandatory subject? That's what we are most concerned about. And of course, if you look at the exam papers, well, in two years, we would criticize that once. And then afterwards, they would make it easier. And then afterwards, if we didn't bring it up, then they would again include some controversial areas that should have never included in the exam paper. So I'd like my colleagues to listen to this. Given the fact that we have this opportunity, why can't we discuss so that we can close the gaps? I agree that in recent years, in this council, we've been criticizing the curriculum design and also the teaching method, the pedagogy and so on. All right, there have been loopholes. Well, this has not been produced by me, and that's in twenty thirteen. And there's this teaching kit on Occupy Central. And then after criticisms were made in this council, they modified this. And then recently, Wong Han Kuen also came up with an article, and he said that initially, there was this Chinese history, and it was, well, brushed aside very hastily, and then they introduced this liberal studies. Should we restore that? Well, I like his writing a lot, and I've also made reference to his articles. I'm very concerned about this subject. I hope that now that we are all concerned about liberal studies, well, we have parents, teachers, students, and even community leaders, they are all very concerned about this. I hope that they would all understand this. We are talking about the way it's being assessed. So I hope that we can start from that so that we can gradually move it back to the right track. Understand that, well, there are twelve liberal studies teachers in one school because you're talking about six modules, and you can't cover everything. And I believe that under liberal studies, you will have to put it back on the right track. You will have to have a syllabus. Well, what's different from the other three subjects for Chinese, English, and mathematics? They have very clear syllabus. But then, when there is no syllabus for liberal studies, then teachers, as to how they should teach the subjects, sometimes they are at a loss as to what or how they should teach it. And therefore, they can only rely on current affairs. Well, it's okay to teach politics, but then it's not just about the controversial current affair subjects. Would they also be talking about some fundamental issues, for example, in Hong Kong? Well, I major in political administration. So why don't we talk about child linen? So that in making policy, should it be gradual and step by step, or should it be done overnight? Well, these are very basic policies or theories on administration. So the students would also understand better how or what public administration is all about. It's not just about whether or not you have done things right on one single subject. So you will have to interpret it from different perspectives. When it comes to current affairs, it's about the establishment of the civil service. Well, we have this meritorious system, it's different from the US because they have the dedicated talent system and so on. So these are basic education, and we can teach them this. And we should all agree that even for secondary school students, they should understand this, and we can teach that. But then, it doesn't necessarily mean that we will have to talk about the Occupy Central movement. Well, even tutorial schools would also think that this might be one of the questions in the exam papers. And these are very controversial subjects. And at best, we should only talk about it at workshops instead of including that in the syllabus so the students will think that these would be tested, and therefore, they will have to memorize that hard. So this is my observation. I have two guinea pigs in my place, and my two sons have studied liberal studies. They've taken exam on liberal studies. So I understand very well how parents are trying their best to help the children with revision of their work. So is it possible that we can come to a compromise? Well, understand that many people, many teachers are teaching liberal studies, there are many stakeholders.
So under such considerations, I hope we can be closer. So it can be compulsory, compulsory by how we can take it past a approach, or it can stay at a mandatory subject. But however, it's not a prerequisite for university entry requirements or using thematic projects instead of exams. Or in test papers, you don't have a compulsory question, mandatory questions. Those mandatory questions, I think some of them are quite difficult for the relationship between democratic index and economic development. So I asked this general studies, I was told that we don't need to know them. We just teachers touch the methodology, we don't necessarily understand what it means. So are we just learning how to sit for exams? The intent for general studies was to equip them with a model perspectives. So the general studies back in my days, back in Chinese universities, quite positive. So back in my secondary school days, we call it a general study. So maybe for a year, there we have a debate on twenty topics. So it's a debate every time. So we don't have exams, just we'd like to read essay we want to. So for our marriage system to the Iranian hostage crisis, we have debate on that. So that's one way of doing it. So now that there's been implemented so many years, like nine years to be exact, it's really time to have a peaceful discussion. Is we necessarily become elective as for the assessment method and is correctly scoped? And for the headmaster really assume responsibility instead of letting the teachers have a free rein? I think we have a chance to attain middle ground. So I support putting more resources for the EDB to explore how do we improve our curriculum, the teaching methods, and how to make thematic studies to make our students enjoy general studies so as to improve the subjects, so to reduce the concern on these subjects. So be the consultation subjects, if I teach students, must include the future employers and parents and all stakeholder society, and President, so I submitted. Next, Mr. Leng Yuchang. And number forty-five amendment, Head one forty-one, on reducing the personal allowance on the Labor and Welfare Bureau. I completely agree with this. And switch on the labor side. And today, I would like to speak on the welfare side of the LWB, especially for the residential care homes of the elderly. So since the unveiling of the budget, the public thinks it is not far enough, even though he's spent over twenty billion for non-recurring expenditure. Even though it's not a small amount, however, this amount is to continue to sustain old policies without any new ones. And the budget proposed that this funding will be for non-recurring expenditure, about one billion, which is half of the amount, will actually be used to I T F for guaranteeology and aging. And today, with the Community Care Fund Scheme, which is about five hundred million. And the remainder will be for the services itself. So hopefully, speaking, these are nothing innovative and radical. It's simply sustain the short-sightedness and a lack of new thinking on the government, which is very disappointing. And for the past two years, even though the public have asked for a recurring subvention services, and the government has been very conservative, have been very reluctant and unwilling to devote more resources, especially on the subvented homes places and daycare centers and home care services places. We hope that the government can inject more resources into it. And the government is just do a normal gesture, for example, adding dozens of places. And for those services with very long queues, is there are simply a drop in the pocket. On the other hand, the government are reactive where you'd wish to. So it's devote a lot of resources into I N T with over tens of that billion dollars as well. It's spending a lot on guarantee technologies. So we're not against innovation technology to assist the elderly service sector. But at the same time, would you consider fixing the basics? Well, like I said, the elderly services, we have, for example, the manpower, the increasing the number of places. These are very pressing demands. So instead of taking care of the urgent ones, you come up with something else. For example, they're launching about caring vouchers and so on. So a simply a shifting responsibility. You are shifting the private, the services to be handled by the private sector. And for services that should be taken up by the government, have been led to the privatization of such services. So besides going, turn to the private sector, you always think about the money following to the patient or even so pay in accordance with their abilities. You only let us have this smaller beneficiary extent. Because a lot of the elderly quite concerned that there will be mean testing and will go through complicated procedures. And just simply a lack of dignity, which give the impression that the government some measures does not really benefit the elderly livelihood. As we all know, that the elderly doesn't live alone but with family members. You are simply led to the family disharmony. This exists, however, the government has simply let the situation improve and actually been promoted. The government have really put any effort in towards combating the aging of society. And this year, the financial budget have over five hundred million to choose community care fund projects. And for those, a supply scheme on those are moderately impaired elderly as well as the home care services for those who's discharged from the hospital. So this is a three-year pilot scheme. So the government has to work with the hospital authority and to embark on this after discharge care services for those over sixty with a re-entry risk will be eligible. Why won't the government consider providing recurrent funding instead of having this pilot trials? And all this measures which give the impression that it lack commitment. Said you implementing policies through some funds, and this time you are asking the CCF to come up with this two pilot trials. As we all know, you claimed this is a pilot trial, we can't stop you. However, this pilot scheme should be regularized. You are procrastinating and come up with something else. So what's the point of all these? And for this post discharge services and home care, and the public have provided a lot of feedback to the government and yet be ignored by it. And for all these pilot trials, I gave the impression that it do care for the elderly and provide comprehensive attention to them. However, the NGOs, as if they're beneficiary themselves, think that all this bells and whistles by the government have led to this phenomenon of redundancy. However, um the N G Os, as if the beneficiary themselves, think that all this bells and whistles where the government have led to this phenomenon of redundancy. Well, why all these schemes? Oh uh failed to become a recurrent policies. Instead of this uh different schemes, which are rather confusing, to obtain the services, you have to uh uh do your own homework to identify the right one for you, which is unsatisfactory. So this criticism that this latest budget. Hmm and simply much to do about on nothing. Instead of uh get providing assistance to those actually in need. So even though it uh allow, provide the choice for the elderly, uh for discharge in hospital to receive the same services at the hospital. Or doing at a uh a pu- pu- a public elderly homes, however, we don't have enough spaces of the later. The simplest solution was to um uh uh turn over into the private market. The government is evading their own obligation and keep pushing um the the elderly to the private ca- ca- care homes. So the government who come up with the measures to uh uh to mitigate uh 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 public anger. I think these services have actually couldn't resolve the actual need. That um did not fail to address the problem of a um longer queue for services. And the government's services have failed to meet the demand. The president. No no matter how many initiatives the C C Fs have launched. Um this is simply a Band-Aid solution, but they're often short-sighted and lazy. And to have a comprehensive overhaul of the shortfall in elderly services. And the elderly care service should be included in the food long-term planning blueprint. The government cl- claims that they had to, they lacked the land and the manpower. So they need to launch such a pilot schemes. And on this refrain of uh lack of land and manpower has repeated over the years. Does that give the governments the excuse? Um to assert their responsibility? We can. And. I don't think the governments uh really don't have the resources and the manpower to solve these problems. For the manpower, if you uh provide more resources for the elderly homes. If you offer them higher pay, um I I think we can resolve the manpower shortage. And all the elderly homes have complained to us of long hours and low pay. And a rather of uh obnoxious line of work. So um that deter a lot of people from joining this sector. If you provide a better terms and conditions and shorter working hours, um you may be able to attract talent to address the manpower shortage. In terms of land. Uh we have more and more people accumulate for services and with more land for public housing. But at the same time, for the new public housing, we can designate a certain number of elderly home places in each housing, public housing development. So that will. Real offer to relieve to the chronic shortage of elderly home places. However, the government he such as gestures, no, um they only when the uh public housing is completed, they will let different negotiation, different departments to wrestle for space. There without a sound policy, this problem could not be addressed it. I think the government must change its binary approach to elderly care policy. And instead of a peaceful fashion and the lack of planning. Otherwise, your problems will remain. And now they're worrying was that um the and the government claims that uh uh promoting home care services. So home care for elderly is not objected by the public. But however, do you have such resources to implement them? You can't simply um hand the responsibility to the family members.
As we know, family matters, family members may also face challenges. Well, for example, some of them have to work, some of them have to take care of their children. So they may not have the time to look after the elderly. So the government could give more resources and give support to long-term carers. Then maybe home care service could help to with um the problem of a shortage of support services. Last year in the budget, the government announced um the injection of three hundred million dollars into rehabilitation services for the elderly and persons with disability. But in the past year, we haven't seen any announcement from the government on the use of the three hundred million dollars. Before the budget this year, I and another member met with the financial secretary. I asked him, where has this three hundred million dollars gone? And then he he looked embarrassed, the financial secretary, he didn't know where the money has gone. And he he dare not say, he not sure, he's not sure if um the money is lost. And I don't want to quote what he said, it's not nice, but anyway. For this three hundred million, uh this thirty million dollars, rather, the thirty million dollars, billion dollars, the government has not told us how it's going to use that money. But this is an important issue. The government has said something, how come it hasn't followed up on it? Is it case that now there's no mention of the funds, so it's not there anymore? If that's the case, there's a cause for worry. So the public needs to, the government needs to tell us where this um thirty million, billion dollars have gone. Uh have, they have to confirm if the money's been earmarked or it's gone for good, they need to tell us. So I'm all in support of this amendment. The secretary for law, labor, welfare and his team have not been, not been doing their job. There is no long-term planning for elderly services, they don't show enough commitment and determination. And they're trying to make uh these um private services, but then the quality of services in the private market vary. So there is no assurance to make sure that the basic rights of the elderly and the disadvantaged are uh defended. And so the government has blind nighted the plight of these groups. I hope the government will reflect on these problems, thank you. Mister Felix Chong, thank you, Mister Chairman, head fifty-three. Mister Alda King has moved two amendments, reduce budget. First is for the uh youth um uh inter- overseas internship program. The other is um exchange, international exchanges for youth. Just now I spoke on the amendments to cut the budget of um economic and trade offices and the mainland offices. And here, the reason is the same. Here we are talking about slashing the budget for international exchanges of young people going overseas. So I object this amendment for the same reason. For young people in Hong Kong, if they have a chance to go to the other parts of the world or to mainland. And broaden the outlook. This is a great help to young people here. If there were such programs funded by the government, when I was young, I would have definitely joined them. About the um um mainland internship program for young people. So um under this program, students could go to take, to do um summer internships on the mainland. Now. In Shenzhen and Dongguan, there are businesses which offer such a summer internships. Of course, and these are not businesses running government factories like what you and I have. But rather, we're talking about science and technology, innovation, creative industries, where there are um internships. I asked them uh what they thought of the experience, they said they uh, they all said they learned a lot. Uh first, they speak better Pudong Hua. And then secondly, I asked whether they've been bullied by businesses, they say no. The mainland colleagues were really kind to them and they were willing to teach them things. And this, so this is a unique experience, especially for young people in Hong Kong, they need to go back to the mainland. So they find out about the developments there, what the businesses are like. You know, the the business there no longer running factories like um what we did say twenty years ago. So such cultural exchanges are good. And in future, uh whether this young people, this young people have another choice of of either going to mainland or staying in Hong Kong for their career development. And they, the 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 young people said that they found this interesting habit of the mainland colleagues, they need to take a lap nap after lunch. Uh first, they were not, the stu- young people were not used to, but eventually they followed their example, they also took a nap and they found they could work better afterwards. So young people now came to see why there's this habit of an um nap after lunch on the mainland. But of course, if they work in Hong Kong, maybe there is not such a practice, but at least they get to know about the practices in the mainland better. So that's why we shouldn't cut the budget for such a program. The other program is for international exchanges for young people. Now, this is another eye-opening experience for young people. And we're not just talking about one country, various countries are covered. Uh I grouped them into three different types. The first would be developed countries like the U K, Germany, Australia, Switzerland. The second type, um those with mid- medium level of development like Brazil, Colombia. And the third type would be developing economies like Cambodia, Burma and so on. So there are three different levels of development for these countries. And young people could choose which country they want to go to. Maybe the uh hmm perhaps young people already know quite a bit about developed countries. But for developing countries, perhaps it's a good chance for young people to go there and see things for themselves. Maybe these countries are not as developed as Hong Kong in terms of economy, but in terms of the culture, arts, um customs and so on. That's a good way for young people to learn more about the world through such aspects. So again, you know, some members just want to cast narrow side on Hong Kong. But you can do that, but you shouldn't slash the budget for um these opportunities for the young people. So Mister Alda King, if you have a chance, maybe you should also take part in these programs, although perhaps you're over age. But you could some, you know, use your own expenses to um go to these places, learn about the world and learn about the development of the country. Don't just, you know, stay put here and then try to deprive others of these opportunities, thank you. Mister Alda King. Mister Chairman. Quite a few members responded to my amendments, I would like to thank them. I would like to thank Mister Alex Felix Chang, who's leaving the chamber. But let me respond to Mister Felix Chong, because twice he mentioned my amendments. Now, if he's been following the debate and my speeches, then he shouldn't say that I'm just um, you know, restricting my own outlook. Uh and and he shouldn't be suggesting that I should broaden my outlook or whatever. Let me declare interest first. I'm a beneficiary of the E T Os, why? When I was still studying in Japan. There was the um E T O in Japan. And I took on a trans- interpretation job for the E T O. So uh I helped um to do interpretation for manager of the less and cultural resource department. So don't say that I haven't been overseas, I don't understand anything about such um international exchange programs or mainland exchange programs and so on. I want to reiterate why I think it's important for us to um cut the budget for such exchange programs. Now, we need to consider the audit reports. As members of this council, we have to consider whether such funding provisions are put to good use. Now, the Audit Commission said this, for the international exchange program, there were sixteen applications. Fourteen came from the same organization. Honestly, sixteen applications may seem a lot, but actually it they come from just one organization. Then there is a problem there. And as members of this council, we have to assess clearly and properly whether the funds are put to good use. And that's the reason why I'm proposing this amendment. And actually, I asked a question of Miss Lau Kong Wah on this um funding scheme, um I'm sure he heard me. The Director of Architectural Services. Um it visited the uh, there's a the a Bei- Beijing Convention Center uh and and for the Hong Kong Pavilion in particular. And um I think at the time, some seven million dollars were set aside for such inspections. Uh the uh Secretary for Home Affairs, Lau Kong has not answered my question yet on that. And then uh on E T Os. Please give me a moment, for on E T Os. If you have studied Mister Eddie Yu's amendment, then he's actually asking a question of whether there uh there is a popular staff establishment for such officers, so that's in line with what I'm saying too. But in this session, actually, I don't plan to spend too much time to respond to Mister Felix Chong. Um but for, in this debate, I would like to talk about Amendment Number Fifty, moved by Mister Ray Chen. That's to cut the estimate by seven point three million dollars, which is equivalent to the funds for the Financial Development Council. The Financial Services Development Council. Now, what is the problem with this council? In this budget, it's proposed that the Financial Services Development Council will be reformed into an independent corporation. And there will be um recurrent funding for the operational expenses of this entity. So I have a question here. Let's look at the aim of the Financial Services Development Council. Uh that is to carry out strategic studies, provide suggestions, uh help promote development of financial services, services and the nurturing of tenderness. This is to enhance Hong Kong's competitiveness in financial services. This council was set up in January twenty thirteen. It's been around for some time now, has it really been promoting the development of the financial services in Hong Kong? Are there problems that we need to consider? The council has carried out six study report, has conducted six studies since it was established. And like boosting Hong Kong's position as international financial center, as an offshore R M B center and so on. There are three other studies which are rather technical and they're only in, the reports are only in English, English. That is about developing Hong Kong into a center for REITs and also taxation matters on private funds, private equity funds and so on. I don't know what you think about financial development. After C Y L set up the Financial Services Development Council. Um that is about Hong Kong being the financing center for REITs. And that's a ha- a led to the S F C relaxing the criteria, the regulation. That's why the link could then um invest in land projects or as or development projects. Now, many members have spoken on the link issue. Now, many members have spoken on the LINK issue in this debate. We would like government departments to regulate the LINK, like control on land leases and construction of markets and so on. So many amendments have been moved by members.
But I think the gist of the matter is that when our financial policies are skewed towards the development of the finance sector and is not paying proper regard to the damage as a result. And we are not tackling the root of the problem. Chairman. About this report on the roots of the FSDC, what is the outcome of that report? It is all playing for everyone to see. LINK, after the relaxation of the relevant policies, have been divesting its properties, is trying to cash in from selling properties and its facilities. And it is making financial investment. And it is the grassroots, it is living in the public rental housing who are suffering. Without the relaxation of the rules, LINK can only carry out AEI and maybe increase a rental for car parking to make a profit. However, the FSDC has indirectly relaxed the relevant rules. The story is totally different. LINK, as a result, can get involved in investment into land. There is the TID in Mong Kok, and that's one example. And the Hoibin Road project in Al Taokou is an example. All these problems stem from the FSDC's proposal for developing REITs in Hong Kong. And the impact on the other sectors of the community has been ignored. Madam Deputy. We are at sea as to why there is this proposed change. The FSDC is originally a semi-official body. And now it will be turned into a guaranteed limited company and recurrent funding will be given to it annually. We asked the FSTB, why do you have to make this change? And they said that we want to develop the financing services sector better. Then I asked that in the supplementary question to the FC on the budget, I asked whether there is a precedent. Is there any precedent which shows that such a change will achieve your aim? And their reply is there is no record of the government setting up a body, which is in the form of guaranteed limited company, getting recurrent funding from the government. This is a big problem. We seldom discuss the issue of the change to be introduced, the FSDC. And I found out that there is no precedent. There is no past experience proving that such a change can achieve your objective. So how can you convince the legal that such an approach will help promote finances as service sector further? I noticed that Joseph Yehm said in twenty twelve that on the economic election manifesto of CYL, and that is to set up an FSDC. He queried that this proposal lacks professional expertise and and there would be an overlapping of the duties with the existing regulatory system. And under one country, two systems, the the CSRC and the People's Bank of China have no duplicating role. And they've been communicating well. Now, he's worried that the establishment of the FSDC will be problematic. And there is a lack of professional expertise in that proposal. And there is a lack of previous experience. So this is a duplication of duties on various government bodies. If we can recall, while in an earlier ESC meeting, we were asked to create an additional post in the HKMA, and that is a financial planner post, to study into Hong Kong's competitiveness and how to enhance it, enhance it. And so we are bewildered. We've got the HKMA, and we've got six government departments working on different economic policies. We have the SFC and the People's Bank of China. And now we have the FSDC. And what about the HKMA? In, or the FSDC, is it superior in relation to the different functions? I mean, compared to the different functions carried out by government departments? Well, their proposal on the REITs development has led to LINK divesting its properties continuously. How come that there is this absurd proposal in Hong Kong? This proposal has adversely affected the trade. I hope that the, those in the council, even from those from the FC, can think about this. Two years ago, when I was standing for the election in the Retail and Wholesale FC, I said this, when we overdeveloped financial services sector and overdefended the property sector, other sectors would suffer, including the retail and wholesale sector, because they were the victims of LINK. Because the FSDC has compiled this report. And as a result, the SFC has relaxed its rules. And ultimately, the retail sector has been exploited by LINK, and they are suffering from rental hike all the time. So on the recurrent funding for the FSDC proposed by the budget, I have great reservation. And not only that, not only that there is duplication of duties if the FSDC is to be restructured, we also see that there is also a conflict of interest. I've always said that the FSDC's report on REIT one, they compiled the report, who participated, including the CEO of LINK, and that is Mr. Wong Kwok Tong. And he was a key stakeholder. And as a result, the rules were relaxed, benefiting himself. So that's what's happening at the FSDC. The government kept telling us that we could have a good conflict of declaration of interest system. And the Board of Directors of the FSDC in the future will continue to monitor the body. The board members are going to be appointed by themselves. But the appointees have all sorts of relationships with the financial sector. And they are there to benefit from whatever policies to be put in place. How can we allow this to happen? Madam Deputy, I hope that you, we can all face up to the problems of FSDC being turned into a guaranteed limited company. I so submit. Mr. Eddie Ju. Thank you, Madam Deputy. In this part, I will talk about the Amendment Number Twenty, Sixty-two and Sixty-three moved by the FS. And that is what we call the Carrying and Sharing Scheme, giving out four thousand dollars. And that is to plug the loophole of the budget. Before we go into the details, let's take a look at the overall picture. Why is it that, or Mr. Eddie Ju? I would like to understand which amendments are you referring to? Sixty-two and sixty-three moved by the Financial Secretary. Please continue. Have you found them? Thank you. If I understand it correctly, among the sixty-seven amendments, these are the only two which call for an increase in the estimates. For the remaining sixty-five moved by members, we are calling for a reduction in the estimates. Maybe members of the public are not familiar with the background. Maybe I would spend some time to give you the details. And that has to do with Article Seventy-four of the Basic Law. And that is to say, from the government's perspective, legislators should not introduce bills which are related to public expenditure. Then ultimately, whether legislators can move amendments to slash the estimates, well, the government and the president have differing views. The president thinks that we can only move amendments to slash estimates but not increase it. But the government thinks that we can do it neither way. So that's why we see this strange phenomenon that among the sixty-seven amendments, only the Financial Secretary can ask for estimates to be raised. And this means that the debate on the appropriation bill will not allow us to have proactive discussion on ways to improve our our approaches. Now, if legislators are allowed to ask for an increase in the estimates, then what will happen? Some members or the legislators said that we're, the society, we're thrown into chaos. Well, let's think about this. It's because we are not allowed to raise various options. That's been filibustering over the years. And we have to keep on moving amendments to force the government to make some minor changes. So imagine if legislators are allowed to move an amendment to increase estimates, the scenario will be very different. Say, for example, for those striving for universal retirement protection, then he can move an amendment to the same. Then we will have a vote on it. And if it is a negative, then there's nothing we can do about it. But because of this straight jacket constraint, we are in a predicament. So what we can do is to, only is to oppose you, to reduce the estimates, to pressure the government into doing something. And second point, going by the experience in the past ten years, we can see that legislators, no matter which political faction they're in, will ask questions relating to budget and trying to force the government to do something. So the government, as a result, will not increase the estimates for certain heads in relation to under certain bureaus. The legislators have been asking for an increase in the resources for places, for RCHEs, and also for dental care for the elderly. But the government has refused to accede to our request. And now, well, the only way that we can do it seems to be forcing you to give cash handouts. So we are doing things in a very convoluted way before we can get something done. And that is to say, all political parties in Hong Kong and all members of the public are wanting you to do something, they want you to increase your public expenditure. But it's like trying to it's like where you have this utensil for you to squeeze a cream out. And you try to put pressure on the government from all sides. And the government has no option but to accede to their request. So they are opting this time to give cash handouts. So now we are discussing whether we should be increasing ten billion dollars or so to have this Carrying and Sharing Scheme.
Under such context, I have read the document shared by the Financial Secretary. And in that document, well, I have something to say about the application criteria for the scheme. And it conveyed two very interesting messages. It says, anyone who is eligible can apply for the four thousand dollars. And the age must be eighteen and above. Perhaps this is up for discussion. Should we only allow people aged eighteen or above to be eligible? Or should we allow everyone? And the second criterion is for Hong Kong identity card holders. So for criterion A, the line is drawn at eighteen years old. And criterion B, Hong Kong identity card holders. I'm sure no one would challenge these two criteria. And criterion C would be for people who ordinarily reside in Hong Kong. Again, I'm sure people would not have objections. For people who have emigrated elsewhere and come back, I'm sure most people would feel that these people should not be eligible. So the interesting criteria lies in D, E, and F. Criterion D says people who are not eligible for the extra payments under CSSA, AOH allowance, etc. And D, individuals who are not paying salary tax. So who can actually receive the four thousand dollars. So some people are deemed, they are considered invisible by the government. Let's not talk about A, B, and C. I will only talk about D, E, and F. Apparently, not all Hong Kong people would satisfy these three criteria. For the Carrying and Sharing Scheme proposed by the FS, he only saw people who fall under DF, but ignore those who fall outside of such criteria. So I wondered why he ignored people who do not fulfill the criteria D, E, and F. I think it is bureaucracy. Our government has a lot of money, but they do not know how to spend it. The FS has been asking various government departments on how much money they can splash out. That's why they offered funds to Ocean Park and DSE exam fee waivers, the extra month of payments for CSSA, reduction in salaries, tax, and rates, etc. And with such bureaucracy already in place, it brings convenience to the FS. So for people who are not covered by the bureaucracy already, they are considered invisible by the government. So this shows how bureaucracy is some masking division of the Hong Kong government. When we look at figures from the past ten years on the sweetness dish out by the government, whenever the government had reserves, more should be, or even whenever the government had reserves, more should be, or even more should be shared with the people. And I'm referring to people who enjoy tax and rates rebates. The Ledge Co. Research Division came up with this chart. I guess those who are watching the TV can see this. From two thousand seven to eight to twenty sixteen to seventeen, the reserves amounted to five hundred sixty-six billion dollars. And the government dish out three hundred and twenty billion dollars in various sweetness, not including this time. The distribution is very clear. Sixty-four percent went to tax and rates rebates. So if you have properties or if you have to pay rates or taxes, you would enjoy the sixty-four percent and of the three hundred and twenty billion dollars. For the grassroots families, they received sixteen percent. So sixty-four plus sixteen represent the people who are covered under the current bureaucracy. The remaining seventeen percent are members of the public. And there are two types. For those who have to pay electricity tariffs, let's assume that everyone has an electricity meter installed at home. So only seventeen percent of the people would, well, people would, or everyone can enjoy seventeen percent of the, of the pie. And the government was criticized. And later, there was the sharing and Carrying and Sharing Scheme. Has the financial secretary ever considered the criticisms he received? He has been ignorant because he has opted to ignore certain people. As for people who are paying taxes or have properties, they are seen as superior and they would be given more consideration. So these two views of the FS should be amended together with these amendments. And if the FS is only making changes out of fear, this attitude is very wrong. And I hope that this attitude will change. So by the time the next budget comes around, the FS should no longer rely on the bureaucratic systems. And he should stop giving the public an impression that the government is biased by giving out sweetness. We have more than four trillion in reserves, including our FX. So through our reserves or surplus, the government should properly redistribute wealth. And during the second reading, I offered a proposal, and I'm repeating it now. You should stop dishing out the sweetness and stop dividing up people. So starting from the next year, if your surplus exceeds a certain line, let's say fifty billion, fifty billion dollars. And after the fifty billion, it should be, the excess should be shared equally. So that way, there would be less quarrels. And the FS can also sleep tight for the next budget exercise. Mr. Ken Leung. Thank you, Madam Deputy.